She's not even here?
Nope. Yep. Good evening, everyone. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of May 2, 2024, was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of compliance setting forth date, time, and location was read into the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed, is now being reconvened. Ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Dr. Tobek.
So I'm going to combine my report.
Go for it.
To conclude the recognition part as well. Okay? I know that this meeting is one of the most important board meetings of the year with both the final adoption of the 2425 budget on the agenda, as well as the district staffing plan for the upcoming year. So just a few comments, a few things to report. First of all, this week, I was very happy to be able to attend the All Wayne Jazz Festival at Wayne Hills High School. It was a wonderful experience and a great representation of the excellence of our music programs. One highlight at the end of the concert was the alumni and faculty performance, where many of our teachers, former students, and one of our principals performed two improvisational jazz pieces. So congratulations to all of our jazz musicians and their teachers for an amazing performance. Also, I was fortunate to be able to watch the opening night SDA performance at Wayne Valley. Congratulations to both teams for their memorable performances. There's so many other reports that I could share, but our student delegates will be sharing that at our next meeting. Did want to mention to the board that we are working on one of our favorite publications of the year. This is a community favorite as well. Our end-of-year newsletter includes lots of news from around the district, but the main purpose is to highlight the class of 2024. So as far as recognition goes, so May is a special time of the school calendar, in that we take times to recognize a number of school employees based on national celebrations. This started on May 1, which is National Principal's Appreciation Day. May 5 is the start of Nurse Appreciation Week, and also Teacher Appreciation Week, which begins on May 6. A big thank you to all of our employees for their dedication and commitment. School Principals' Day is celebrated on May 1 every year. It's a perfect time for all members of the community to thank our educational leaders who work tirelessly to make sure that our schools run smoothly for students and staff. We're fortunate to have principals that work so hard to create an academic atmosphere that allows students to succeed. Our principals also support and guide teachers to be the very best they can be, using their leadership skills by providing resources that the teachers need. Decades of educational research points to the importance of the role of school principals in schools that achieve great outcomes for their students. And we're fortunate to have a team of experienced and capable principals working in the Wayne Township Public Schools. Also, for National Nurses Week, the Wayne Township Public Schools recognizes the dedication and contributions of all of our school nurses. National Nurses Week is scheduled annually from May 6 to May 12, concluding on the birthday of Florence Nightingale, considered to be the founder of modern nursing. Each school celebrates Nurses Weeks, I'm sorry, Nurses Week in different ways. Also, Teacher Appreciation Week, so next week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. And across the district, each school has a variety of events and activities planned to recognize the excellent work of our teachers in partnership with our parents. For HIB, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township Public Schools. There were six incidents of HIB that were investigated since my last report, and only two of those cases were deemed to be actual cases of HIB. That concludes my report. Now on to Mr. Moffett for the budget presentation.
So for the board members, you have a packet of the Q and A, which is exactly the same as the tentative, as well as a copy of tonight's presentation, which, like I said, we've kind of added a few slides just to elaborate what we submitted. So we'll go through the presentation quickly if possible, and then be available for questions. So again, it's an overview. We'll talk about some important dates, influencing factors, macro-level information, as well as trends and some budget summaries. So our overview. Again, we're in a good financial position, as we reported out last time we met, on the budget, which was the last public meeting. We have a healthy unassigned general fund balance of $3.4 million. Capital reserves, about $6.4 million, and a maintenance reserve of about $2.3 million. And trends that I'll get into a little bit that have a negative impact on this year's budget, which is 2023 and 2024, and into next year, which is 2024, 2025. And all estimated surplus and reserve positions, about $8.2 million. Again, that's a healthy position, as we talked about. Boards work hard to maintain these reserves because they do help in the event we have unbudgeted items that are revealed during the year, which it's obviously been very helpful for that this year, as well as fund the reserves, our funding rod grants. So we are putting the funds to work as we reserve them. Important dates, November, December, is when the location budgets, specifically the departments and the schools, do their budget crafting. Submit it to our office in January, February. We review them. We sit with our department heads and any other individual within the district that would like to sit down and go over it. We make ourselves available. March 7, we have started discussing it at the board level openly and in general public and in finance committee. We've done that through the year. March 21 is when we submit it to the public for feedback. March 22, we submitted it to the board as a tentative budget, basically what you approved. And again, that was always available for review, and any changes that you and I had, either as a result of a review at the county level, or any feedback from the board. April goes to the county office, state of New Jersey. They review it both fiscally and programmatically. Once they approve it, we're allowed to officially advertise. The advertisement went into the newspaper, and we posted on our website. And tonight is May 2, and that's our public hearing, which is required by regulation. This is a general overview of the budget. General Fund Budget total is $189 million, which is a total decrease of about 3.4, which represents a decrease of 1.78. School tax levy, which is property taxes that funds the overall budget, is $171 million, which represents about a 4.1 increase from year to year, which is 2.48. And as we'll see later, there's a gradation of different house values later on on a slide we have, and that is going to average out the average assessed value of $230,000 is roughly $204 a year. Some influencing factors this year. As I stated, we've had some troubling trends that's developed, what I think as a result of a lot of latent issues that have been kind of rolled into the general public and our student population as a result of the pandemic. So we're struggling to address every student and staff needs in regard to student support services, which also brings into any out-of-district placements transportation. So there's a push with transportation. Employee benefits have increased again this year, and we project it into the future. That represents about 400,000. We have an increased need for facility technology as it relates to a lot of the new methodologies to reach our students. And we have various salary-related lines that are a result of various coverage and other needs that we have for salary services. Influencing factors, again, continued student support services, continued transportation needs, and expanded special education programs. The increase in salaries is about 4.7, 5.7 is 3% increase average. Increased employee benefits, roughly 15, we anticipate, which is 3.6, which totals 9.4. Total cap adjustment with adjustments, so you have a total cap, 2%, plus adjustments for health care costs and enrollment increases, so that's 3.3. We had an increase in state aid, which is 1.8. The adjustment for health benefits you see is 615,000 roughly, and then the enrollment adjustment is 189. These are all various initiatives included. So these are I Ready, which is Multi-Tierred System of Support, which is K-8 Multi-Tierred MTSS, 75,000. I Ready is 105. You have decodable readers. Italian Textbooks, which is a next series that we'll be replacing, which includes a software component, like I said earlier. We've seen textbooks slowly phased out with a lot of the software. Now it's online, and we have to buy licenses, so we transitioned to that, which includes some additional Algebra I textbooks, which is digital resource at the high school. And then we have a couple of new areas that we're anticipating some expansion, a continued expansion, which are elementary school teachers, so the two there, and there are two at the preschool level. And we continue to expand the preschool, so these are non-salaried, so this will cover expansions of classrooms as we continue to build out Preakness, which represents about 21,000. Other initiatives more globally, this is lease purchase application. It's similar to like a five-year lease to own. We're going to continue with a one-to-one computer program at about $750,000. That's the estimated grade level costs. We have staff computer program at 300,000. We have three new 54-passenger buses, one specialized 22-passenger with a lift, and then two vans at 24-passengers. Again, significant money. We continue to expand this to cover our needs for equipment, not only for transportation, obviously for computers, and then in our facility area, we also have a need for replacement of vehicles and equipment. Part of our overall budget, which is outside of our operating day-to-day budget, which is federal funds, we have what they call ESSA, which is Every Student Succeeds Act. So that's roughly 339,576. We have IDEA, which is also a federal program specifically targeting special needs students, which represents about 598,000. Our total revenue, as you can see, the majority of it comes from tax levy. It's close to 91% of our overall needs are addressed by the property tax. We do have some small carve-outs, which the biggest one is state aid, and a smaller amount on the top, which would be Medicaid and miscellaneous, which is tuitioning. You know, any type of revenue we receive for students, which small population right now, we continue to look at expanding that. We do receive revenue from rents from our facility, and then we have some miscellaneous revenue. On appropriation side, largest portions have had to do with employee benefits and academic programs, so those are salary-related items. And then we have student support, which includes salary, which is a large section, about 11%. So as you can see, student transportation is in green, and facilities are the smaller slices on the left, and the student activities is right on the side there in that reddish, at about 2.34%. And you can barely see capital outlay because we do most of our equipment financing, as I said earlier, part of lease purchase application, and we find other ways to address through grants some of our facility needs. Reserve account activities, capital reserve, we were able to use that over time, and we continue to work on this. Currently, a lot of conversations had to do with the planning for Preakness, has the first bullet there, about 4.3, which was a withdrawal, which is a rod grant. We were eligible for a rod grant, so that is moving forward. And we have one submitted. Right now, it has not been approved. It's the elevator and ADA upgrades, 1.5. It has not been funded by any type of withdrawal, but it is something that has been submitted. There is a chance, because we received notification that they look like they will be doing a preschool funding program. I received that, I think, a day or two ago. So we look to resubmit it if it's totally, doesn't get addressed by the rod grant, so we're going to consider that in the next couple of days. Maintenance reserve, withdrawals funded, the Fallon Facade Project, Tunis Day, APT, partial roof, and Ryerson. And we also have funding set aside for Wayne Hills chimney flu and Skylar Kofax communication upgrade. Debt service, one of the things that we talked about last time, this is the fall off for the Wayne, Anthony Wayne Middle School debt, that fell off. So this budget, meaning 2425, does not have a fiscal obligation in regard to debt service as it relates to that referendum passed in the past. Last year, just so you know, we had about $2.6 million that fell off. So that was the last payment we made, which is principal and interest. So there'll be, when you look at our user-friendly budget, that does not have a section, it's above and beyond our tax levy component. So you have the general fund offset by the general fund tax levy, and then you have the debt service levy, we get separate, which is no longer there. So just, it'll be the second component of our overall budget. This is the, what I alluded to, if you have a different assessed value, would like to get a closer impact on what the assessed values is, I should say, assessed values are. The current assessed average home is 230,435. And you can see there, in the middle, is the average is 204 annually, $17.04 monthly and daily, roughly 56 cents a day. Just a summary of the overall budget. Tax levy, again, increased from 167 last year to 171, which represents about 2.48. State aid increased to 1.8, which is 17% increase. Federal aid semi, which is a small dollar amount, increased 22%. Again, these are projected revenue numbers that we submitted and that were approved. That makes the overall operating budget 189 again. Non-public programs, which has flowed through dollars to parochial schools and private schools in town, represents about 232. That's textbook nursing aid, those type of things. The federal aid, as we spoke about earlier, together is $949,000. And then we do have a charter student that we have to require to budget for that and submit that. There's the zero for the debt service tax levy and our $190 million total budget, which represents a decrease of about 3.25% overall. Some budget trends we've been speaking about. We have significant unanticipated costs as it relates to the 2324 school year that have revealed to the district to take steps to control the funding for student support services, right? So these are things that we've noticed through the year, that projections were, this year, we're in a process of making sure we have enough funds available for current programs, and that influences next year's budget, because if the trends continue, that is a, what I call a budget buster, where you're unanticipated, and then I have to make adjustments to the budget on the fly within the school year of 2024, 2025. So we've taken steps currently, which is we appropriated extraordinary aid. We did that last couple of meetings ago. And then we also appropriated unbudgeted fund balance to assist us to identify the areas, well, that have been identified, I should say, and then move and transfer funds to cover as we continue to monitor this year's financial activity. So what we're doing is we're looking at available funds on various different lines and potentially covering the short line. So we look at the overs to cover the shorts. So part of that was to help us this year, 2320, 2223. The Next Generation Science Lab Program, we put that on hold for the moment, so we want to make sure we maintain our reserve position in case the programs that we are currently conducting need resources, and we have some reserves there. We're also making sure we cover the programs, I should say, the facility projects that we have underway, the rod grants, make sure if they have any needs that we have some resources to continue to make sure we can build out as planned. We did reduce the facility budget this year and are just focusing on health and safety concerns. And also internally, administration has developed a plan to further address and control costs, specifically the cost drivers that we identified in the student support area, and we're projecting continued increase into next year. And it is something that we're keeping an eye on, and we're actively working on it. Next steps, this, it's approved tonight. It's then submitted and finalized with Department of Education. There's a form we submit online, and then there's an A4F, which is a tax-type request from the town, and it goes to the county as well. So those documents are finalized, and then if adopted, it's then going to be open for use, we hope sometime in early June, if not a little earlier. And when we're done with that, just one, the last thing after it's open, because that's what happens at the school level, as they finish their year, they are looking to make purchases and structural material for September. So they'll be working as the budget is open to make those purchases online through a cooperative system that we have. And just a final note is that if there are changes, which we're anticipating modifications when we open, to already address some of these trends that I spoke about next year, we've, and the plan that we've developed, we may really modify that on the fly, as I say. So that is something that is available. Again, that's always approved by the board. Any type of major transfers go on the board agenda for approval. So that is something that would be part of the next steps. No, that was quick, and I know it was like a review of information that has already been shared. I'm available for sending any questions and any general public comments. I think we're going to be opening up.
Any questions from the board on the budget? Mrs. Battersham?
So I just want to make it clear, right? We have got about 17 million for facilities that is budgeted over this year, and that is just to get through the health and safety, the bare minimum things that we need to with the facilities over the year ahead to manage and maintain the school system. We're stopping the next-generation labs. We're not doing anything above and beyond that we could have been able to go through, and that is still an impact of $204 a year to the taxpayer that we can't phase in over a number of years, because we have to start gathering that information, that money straight away through the tax levy, right? Whereas through the referendum, we would have been able to get a lot of things done. We would have been able to move faster at that period of time, and we would have been able to phase in that change to the taxpayer over a number of years.
Yes. They've been instructed to focus on health and safety issues. We funded our current salary side, which is all of our maintenance and custodial support. So in that regard, we'll be dealing with health and safety issues as they resolve, any type of breakdowns, and we'll have people available to do that. We'll be doing that all in-house, but any type of project beyond that, just repair, anything major, yes, you are correct. They've been put on hold internally and just focused on health and safety issues.
And we're going to continue to track down as many grants and as much state funding as we can to use against that, to try and get the best out of our money.
Correct. If it means resubmitting the rod grant applications that have been approved, that will be that. It'll also be the new preschool funding that became available recently. We'll be doing that and looking around for anything else that we can find, yes. Move forward with projects. There are projects currently underway, as I pointed out, but yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda?
I can, was there any questions from the general public that you'd like to entertain as part of the?
We're going to open up next.
So addition to tonight and changes to the agenda, number T, emergent human resources, number three, approval of revised items. We're going to add a number nine, Suzanne Fiorante. A revised end date of interim director of technology stipend from April 30, 2024 to May 31, 2024. We're adding number 10, Eric Lindoff. Revised the date of interim systems network administrator stipend from April 30, 2024 to May 31, 2024. And we'll be adding number 11, Scott Stiletto. Revised end date of interim systems network administrator stipend from April 30, 2024 to May 31, 2024. Moving on to item number 10, approval of administrative leave. We're going to add number three and revised date to read April 26, 2024 through May 3, 2024. Moving on to X, emergent school resource legal. We'll be adding X1, which is approval of settlement agreement and general release. That action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number 2191924979 dated April 16, 2024, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. Number two, we'll be adding X2 is approval of termination for good cause. Recommended action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approves the following termination for good cause, staff ID number 8788. Adding number X3, approval of termination for good cause. That action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following termination for good cause, staff ID number 9159. Moving on, we'll be adding X4, which is approval of employment separation agreement and release. That reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the employment separation agreement and release, an irrevocable letter of resignation in the matter of employee ID number 0375 dated May 1, 2024, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. And lastly, we'll be adding X5, approval of HIB determination. That action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board affirm the superintendent's decision on HIB case number 98-2023/2024, follow an appeal as required by NJSA 18A 37-15 parentheses B, parentheses 6, and parentheses E. That concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibilities for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under all business. Do I have a mover? Move. Mr. Giudiano? Mr. Battersham? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on an agenda item?
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Matt Crowley, and I currently serve as the president of the Wayne Township Administrators Association. I'm here tonight to support the superintendent's recommendation of granting tenure to our members. Each May is the time when recommendations are made to renew contracts and grant tenure to administrators within our association. The WTA collectively is strong and skilled. We, along with our teachers and staff, are the backbone of this community. We are tasked with the education, and most importantly, the safety of hundreds of students each day. Having worked as a building principal at Lafayette Elementary School since 2014, I have watched new employees from out of the district and Wayne teachers transition to principal or assistant principal roles within the district and thrive because of the support of the colleagues around them and the team that they have built. As we gather here, I am reminded of the profound impact that dedicated leadership can have on our school. on our school communities. All of our members, all of our members, demonstrate a deep commitment to fostering an environment that values academic excellence, personal growth, and inclusivity. Their tireless efforts have been instrumental in shaping the positive climate and cultures that exist in each of our school buildings. And consistent building leadership is a key ingredient to the climates that we are so proud of. Our district leadership has selected school leaders that, through a rigorous process, and make informed decisions. Not supporting their recommendations creates an environment of uncertainty that can potentially cause great administrators to search for other opportunities elsewhere. Therefore, it is my purpose to stand before you to support the tenure of our outstanding administrators and advocate for a unified climate and culture throughout this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on agenda items? Or budget?
See no one?
Mr. Battersham? Mrs. Rigoloso? This time we're going to, we're not going to move the agenda at this point. We have to go back into executive session. We have a personnel matter and a legal matter. We will most likely be in executive session at least 45 minutes, if not a little longer. So we're going to open to the public for the second portion of our open public comment on any items. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comments on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover? Move. Mr. Giudiano? Mrs. Gmandry? I was good. I had Mrs. down the center. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on anything? Mr. Battersham? At this time, we're going to move into executive session. Again, as I said, it's going to be at least 45 minutes, and we will be coming out.
Mr. Pauline, kind of the call.
No, at the end. No, we have to do it at the end. For personnel matter, personnel matters as well as legal issue. All right? Thank you. Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Giudiano? Mr. Favor? What do you mean? Principal, the mayor's office, okay.[777.82]
Take a motion to reconvene.
Motion.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
I'd like to motion to move the agenda.
I'd like to motion to move the agenda, but I would also like to make a motion to move the policy discussions that are on the agenda back to committee.
I second both motions.
The first and second. Any que... Move the policies back to committee. It's all part of the motion. Any discussion? Roll call?
We're approving.
The motion is to move the agenda and to move the policies that are on the agenda back to committee. We can do it all as one.
I would get because I have to move.
Oh, yeah, we do have to move them. Okay, so Mr. Ge... Mr. Geppert, can we put them all into one motion?
I would do it in two separate steps there.
Okay, so motion one. Motion one is to move the policies back into committee.
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Faber, Mr. Paul.
Personnel committee or...
Policy.
Policy committee.
Everything to policy committee.
All right, it's motion one. Any discussion on the motion?
Paul.
Paul.
What is the second?
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
We're approving.
The motion is to move the agenda and to move the policies that are on the agenda back to committee. We can do it all as one.
I would get because I have to move.
Oh, yeah, we do have to move them. Okay, so Mr. Ge... Mr. Geppert, can we put them all into one motion?
I would do it in two separate steps there.
Okay, so motion one. Motion one is to move the policies back into committee.
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Faber, Mr. Paul.
Personnel committee or...
Policy.
Policy committee.
Everything to policy committee.
All right, it's motion one. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Battershill.
Paul.
Oh, Mr. Paul.
Paul, what is the second?
Okay.
Roll call. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to reconvene?
Motion.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes.
All right, take a motion to move the agenda?
I'd like to motion to move the agenda, but I would also like to make a motion to move the policy discussions that are on the agenda back to committee.
I second both motions.
The first and second? Any que... Move the policies back to committee? It's all part of the motion? Any discussion? Roll call?
We're approving.
The motion is to move the agenda and to move the policies that are on the agenda back to committee. We can do it all as one.
I would get because I have to move.
Oh, yeah, we do have to move them. Okay, so Mr. Ge... Mr. Geppert, can we put them all into one motion?
I would do it in two separate steps there.
Okay, so motion one. Motion one is to move the policies back into committee.
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Faber, Mr. Paul.
Personnel committee or...
Policy.
Policy committee.
Everything to policy committee.
All right, it's motion one. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Battershill.
Paul.
Oh, Mr. Paul.
Paul, what is the second?
Okay.
Roll call. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, they're all first readings anyway, so I think it's early enough in the process.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to move the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Paul. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call.
Mrs. Lamangri?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Buentec?
Yes on everything except no on T five number three.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes, but I recuse on X five.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So any old business, new business, board member comments? Mr. Battershill?
So I'd just like to say a big thank you for Teachers Appreciation Week to all of the teachers and obviously to all of our principals. I think you all do a fantastic job, but I also want to put into there the one that we never spend enough time thanking, which is the Nurses of Week as well. I've got to say my kids, especially all the way through elementary, spent a lot of their time with a nurse. I had more phone calls with the nurse than any of the teachers or the principal, I suspect, over that period of time, and my wife had many rushes back to the school to pick them up from there at many times. So I really appreciate the effort that they put into making the school system an amazing place as well.
Anyone else? Mrs. Lamangri?
I too would like to thank the principals, the teachers, and the nurses. The job you do is incredible, and the parents and the students are a testament to how great things are going here in Wayne, so I'm very thankful for all of you and for all of your effort. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to thank all of you for everything you do every day. I know what happens. I'm in a school. I'm in a high school. I see it. I see what the principals, the assistant principals, what they deal with day in and day out. I don't know how you do it. It's like people used to say to me, "Don't you want to be chief of police like your father?" Hell, no. Not at all. But thank you, and thank each and every one of you for what you do every day, for everybody, including us. Mr. Crowley? We wish you well as you move on. I can't believe you're here 10 years already. Oh, my gosh. It's crazy. It goes quick, but we wish you all well in your new job, and we know you will be a shining star as we move forward. Dr. Tobek, do you have anything to say? I'm sorry, I skipped over you. It's late.
I'm late.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Battershill. Good night, everybody.